We are in order for this regular council meeting, May 14, 2019, at 6:00 P.M. And this time, we will have the invocation by Judy Eichner and then the pledge. Now, she might not say anything about this, but I'm going to. This time last year, we were praying for our daughter-in-law, who's in the Air Force, and getting ready to go spend a year in Afghanistan. And two little boys and a husband down there in San Antonio. Last week, that daughter-in-law came back. So, great rejoicing. And George even had his trumpet, so as she came off the plane. Great thing. All right. Okay, let's stand.
Well, if you hear repeats in my prayer, it's because everything everybody has said tonight is what I was going to say.
It bears repeating.
So, please, if you will bow your heads with me. Lord, we thank you for the wonderful, wonderful weather that we've experienced, the rain today, the beautiful, awesome day yesterday. We just thank you for allowing us to live in such a beautiful place. We thank you, Lord, for our first responders and for all of our military, those who are willing to put their lives on the line so that we can enjoy the wonderful freedom that we all enjoy. We thank you, Lord, that as we begin new beginnings, we ask that you be with us. And in those new beginnings, Lord, we ask that you help us treat one another respectfully, listen to our community, listen to the things that they're trying to tell us, listen to the things that they would like. We ask that you guide us, give us wisdom, discernment, and give us respect for different opinions. This has been mentioned several times tonight, Lord, and we just need to be mindful of that. And we ask that you never let us lose sight of our collective purpose, because it's what brings us together and it's what keeps us together. And that collective purpose is what is best for the city of Kerrville. In all these things, Lord, we ask. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements of community interest, starting with Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. I'd say thank you for where you came out tonight and welcome, especially want to welcome our two newest council members. We just got four announcements tonight. The first one, we begin the morning at 9:00 A.M., we have the National Police Memorial Service. I don't know if y'all have been to this before, but it's a pretty moving experience. It's going to be in front of the police station, and I would encourage everybody to come out if you get a chance and take it in. I know we're going to talk a little bit about it later on tonight, but just want to mention that service in the morning. All right. We are having an open house Thursday night. We're going to be going over the co-review committee. They're hoping, they're hosting an open house. We'll be discussing the ongoing zoning code rewrite that we're involved in right now. Would like as many of y'all as possible to come out and take a look at it. There'll be a bunch of exhibits there. Give us your input on what you see, what you like, what you don't like. If you can drop by Thursday, that's from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M. I think there's actually a free presentation that begins at 5:20 P.M. But we'll be going from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M. So, please stop on by and take a look at things and let us know. Okay. And we also recently conducted our second national community survey. We used a random population base of 1,800 homes in the Kerrville city limits. That survey is complete, but I know a lot of people expressed interest in it. So, just as we did three years ago, we've now expanded it. You can take the survey online, and you can go either to our website or our Facebook page and click on the link there, and it will take you directly to it. It's going to be open to May 31st, so feel free to go out there and take it. And again, let us know what you're thinking. And finally, last but certainly not least, oops, I missed it. There we go. Had to bring it up. We publicized this. We had a great game last Friday night. I don't know how many people were able to make it out there. It was a little drizzly, but it was still a lot of fun. Terrific turnout. The police department was up 20 to nothing heading into the fourth quarter. Don't know what happened, but...
Night walk.
Three touchdowns by the fire department in the fourth quarter, and they came back and won 22 to 20. So, that evened the series, because last year was the first game that we did, so we're now tied 1 to 1. On a really positive note, I think I heard this morning that it raised over $4,000 for Christian Women's Job Corps. So, thank you. That's it. Thank you very much.
Good. Any other announcements of community interest?
Mr. Mayor, may I make just a couple of things? I think we should applaud our K-Pub. They recently received a national recognition for their restoration response efforts after Hurricane Irma. So, I thought that was neat. They have their picture in the paper, and I think we should... Kudos to them. And then I'd also like to mention that tomorrow, Wednesday, the 15th, is the last day to file for protesting your taxes. So, if anyone has not done that and wants to, tomorrow's the last day.
All right. Okay. Let me back up just a minute and remind you that if you want to speak to an issue, you need to fill out a speaker form and get that to the city secretary up here. So, if you will do that now, so, because once we get to that point, it's not enough time to sign up. So, if you want to sign up for an agenda item, if you will give the speaker form to the city secretary. Okay. Visitors and citizens forum, this is for items not scheduled on the agenda. You do need a speaker request form, and you have four minutes.
We have four speakers signed up.
Okay.
Jeremy Walther.
Jeremy Walther, 332 Clay Street. Thank you, Council Mayor, city staff, for this opportunity for a common citizen to come up and have a conversation. I'm proud to participate in this system. I'm also very encouraged, excited, and proud to see our city leaders embrace a new vision for Kerrville with hope, ambition, a positive perspective, and an urgency to get to work for everyone in our little city, especially in regards to our young people. There is a well-developed practice in design, architecture, and urban planning that identifies certain patterns within a building, a neighborhood, or a town that contribute to a feeling of aliveness. And Kerrville enjoys many of these identified patterns, characteristics that make Kerrville feel alive and vibrant. And in the context of young people, I'd like to offer three examples. One is master-apprentice relationships. These are ones that create a fundamental learning situation where one acquires knowledge by helping someone who really knows what they're doing. Most of these relationships, the more of these relationships that exist in a community, the more alive that that town feels. A second pattern is a common respect for the teenage society. A high school can't single-handedly guide a child into adulthood. That's something that takes a village. Organic relationships with a variety of elders who respect the importance of the teenage phase can help children become wholesome, balanced adults. The third characteristic of a living, vibrant, alive town or community is shopfront schools run by independent owner-operators. Kids learn by doing in all phases. And by observing and/or working directly with adults, solving real problems, creating real solutions, young people are given a greater opportunity to learn and to find their own calling. All three of these characteristics of aliveness already exist in our town, both inside and outside of our schools. And it was through these kind of existing connections that a community effort called Big Seed was born. Big Seed is a series of free art, music, and film festivals held in public venues throughout Kerrville, open to artists aged 23 and under. Big Seed provides outlets for artists, musicians, and filmmakers to share their creative passions and creates opportunities for those artists to connect to an expanded audience. In March of this year, the first Big Seed Festival was held at Pine and Plow. This four-hour festival included over 20 musicians, 120 artists, 10 filmmakers, and a presentation by a freshman at Shriner who owns her own photography business. Nearly 400 attendees came to that festival on a cold, rainy night, standing outside to cheer on and support those kids. Several weeks later, a Little Seed session was held at the Kerrville Farmers Market. This is a smaller, pop-up version of the Big Seed Festival with four musicians and three featured artists. One of them is here tonight on the Student Advisory Council, who sold their art and engaged with the Kerrville community. In April, another Little Seed session was hosted by Pax Coffee &amp; Goods. The place was filled, and this session led to additional gigs for two of the performers and more sales for the featured artists that night. The next Little Seed session, may I? I'm sorry, I've hit my time.
You didn't finish.
I'll finish up. The next Little Seed session will be at 1962 Barber &amp; Beauty on Jefferson Street in their backdoor speakeasy behind the main salon next Friday, May 24th, at 6:00 P.M. What we have seen with Big Seed Festival and Little Seed Sessions has been remarkable. In the last few months, a small group of teenagers have become empowered to take the reins of this concept, paving their own path and creating their own opportunities with guidance from community elders within locally-owned businesses throughout Kerrville. The session at 1962 Barber &amp; Beauty will be the first event actually run and organized by the kids and not the grown-ups. So, we encourage everyone to come out, continue to support these kids, continue to help provide opportunities for those young kids, and like Mrs. Clarkson said tonight, show them that Kerrville is a place for them to become adults by choice. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Wow, that was wonderful, and we do need more of that. Congratulations are in order to a nice, undivided council. You all campaigned and agree on the plans to do more tourist and quality-of-life projects, and I heard no qualms about adding to the city $60 million current debt, as of the Daily Times 4/11/19. Since then, we've added another $2 million to the debt, and I guess it comes to mind because money for infrastructure projects and projects for our development, for things like master-apprentice relationships and all, these are part of our infrastructure and important, and I don't know where that money's going to come from. Our city council has added $2 million more for unseen aspects of the new middle school project, Daily Times 322, repair to one mismanaged project, and for studies for multiple projects, Daily Times 314, and city council monthly status reports. Jack Pratt said at city council, "Our wealthy retirees are sitting on millions of assets. The modestly-paid, blue-collar workers of Kerrville don't need to worry about debt." I asked myself, does that mean the modestly-paid worker won't be paying higher water and sewer fees and property taxes? I couldn't figure out from the Daily Times 510, May 10th, just what the sales tax does pay for. How much does Jack know about how much money a retiree's had? How does he plan to access it? What makes Jack think Kerrville should be able to access it for unvoted-upon, ever-growing projects such as tourists? I think I understand now. People move in from failed states, pay more for their homes. Our property values go up, those get translated into higher assessments. Our city council sets a tax rate on these assessments. They don't need to raise the rates when the assessments are going up. They could lower the rates and help families and infrastructure. They could use these monies for affordable housing. We pay $1,200,000 a year on debt and maintenance of the sports complex. According to the agreement with the managing tenant DBAT, no rent or upkeep they pay because they were going to bring in to approximately 750 scheduled games or activity. I'm not sure I'm correct on that. You can correct me. That would impact our sales revenues and hot. According to May 9th, Daily Times, DBAT brought in 365 teams, far below the agreed-upon number. That number was heralded as a hit. It did increase sales tax and hotel taxes, but these don't pay our debts. Our water and sewer rates pay the lion's share of our debts. Citizens interested in finding out where city council projects fit into the 2050 Community Plan and how they can impact city council project planning need to speak up, and they need to speak to their councilmen. Thank you.
Dale Trees.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and congratulations to our new council members, and a quick thank you to our outgoing council members who were tremendous help on the board that I serve here with the city of Kerrville. My name is Dale Trees. I live at 115 Plaza, and I am the chairman of the Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition. And you've been a great... There's a number of people who are in this room this, tonight, who have been a great service and a help to our coalition board. This is a recovery community, and we're happy to become part of this community of Kerrville and want to serve in any possible way. Also want to give a quick thanks and a shout out to all those who will be receiving recognitions, proclamations, and some commendations who will be following up this evening. I've watched y'all from afar, and I'm quite impressed, and I appreciate the opportunities you've given myself and my board members, or our board members, to interact with you here in the community. I do want to make one announcement right quick. The Recovery Community Coalition was started by the city council a couple of years back. Our first meeting was in January of 2017. And I was here to present last year and talked about some things that were upcoming that started taking place for 2018. And I'm happy to announce that we will be having our first Hill Country Recovery Rally this Saturday at Carver Park, and it will start at 11:00 A.M., go through 6:00 P.M. This is completely all put on by a few sponsors, including the facility I work, which is a treatment center in La Hacienda, as well as one of our other board members, Starlight Recovery Center. Our recovery homes in the community, as well as a few other businesses who are donating their time and their efforts to help us with this process. They're going to be... They provided us with the food, the drinks, the desserts, and all the extras to go along with it. It is a fun time for the family. We have a number of people in recovery in our community here who have families, and here at Carver Park is where our event will be held, and we have a playscape for the kiddos and the splash park. Of course, you know, it's been raining a lot. We'll splash without the park. We have a lot of events planned. We have three speakers who are going to join us. These are persons in long-term recovery as well. Along with that, we'll have hot dogs, hamburgers, and live music throughout the day. And part of, and something I'm very excited about, is a couple of weeks ago, as you knew, as you know, through Tybee High School, they had the program Shattered Dreams. That group of young people from the high school are on board to provide us with the activities to keep all of us older people working and active and moving around. So, they're a part of it, too, and it's very exciting to have the younger community and the students at Tybee High, and perhaps the folks at Kayak will also come and join us. And I just wanted to make that announcement. We're very excited. This is our first one. We're hoping to perhaps make this an annual event, and our next one, perhaps even after we speak to the board on Monday, the board meeting, maybe we can start planning one for Recovery Month, which is September. So, thank you for your time. It's great to be here.
Thank you. Sandra Garcia.
Good evening, council. I'm really grateful that Jeremy went before me, because it wasn't planned, but I'm going to talk about the same thing, same topic with our youth. Four years ago, Mayor Pratt came up with the idea of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, and after that, Mayor Bonnie did an amazing job, amazing job participating with the youth in that council for two years. Unfortunately, they did not have the support this year from the current council, maybe from Mr. Vocal and Mr. Barudy, who attended a few of the meetings. Prior to our mayor starting, we did meet with him and ask that the youth have the opportunity to shadow city staff, to work in an apprenticeship with the city staff, to learn about what the city manager does, to learn about what the city attorney does, to learn about the library. Maybe somebody wants to be a librarian and would like to work with them. Maybe somebody is interested in engineering and would like to work with the city engineer. Unfortunately, that did not occur. So, I am asking this council to truly take to heart the value and the asset that we have not only in these youth here that are part of the kayak, that meet once or twice a month to try to do things for the city, and many times are not allowed to, or put red tape across from getting their work done efficiently and effectively to benefit the youth of Kerrville. So, I am asking, again, that you truly take to heart the importance of our children here in Kerrville, of our youth who are soon to become adults, the youth that we want to come back to help run our city, the youth that want to participate in our city, the youth that are putting in the time and effort to meet. Give them the opportunity to do something for this city. Listen to them. They've done a survey for two years. Last year, they were not allowed by the city manager to present that survey, and I'm grateful this year they are, because there's a wealth of information that our council needs to listen to, because it is from our youth who are currently living here, who want to stay here, who want to make Kerrville their city, their city for 2050, because they're the ones that are going to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have some presentations to make. This is for the Shriner University Shooting Team. Its representatives from that team will come join me here. I'm going to read this proclamation, but I want you to know, this shooting team, they are national champions in Division One this year. Shriner University Shotgun Team, while new to varsity programs, is in their 13th year of competition. All shooting team members are expected to maintain minimum grade standards, attend weekly practices, quarterly fundraising events, classroom sessions, and display a respectful image on the field, online, and in the classroom. And whereas the team has won the Division III runner-up title in 2014, 2015, 2016, and 2017, the team won the national championship in 2018. This year, and that was in Division II, this year, the Shriner University Shotgun Team, coached by Robert Davis, took 29 student athletes to the D1 National Championship. And whereas the Shriner team competed in six events, with each competitor shooting 600 targets over four days, breaking a total of 2,498 of 2,600 targets, earning them the title of the ACUI Collegiate Clay Target National Champions. Now, therefore, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the city of Kerrville, Texas, hereby proclaim May 14 today Shriner University National Champion Shotgun Team Day. All right. Give us your name and relationship to the team.
I'm Colton B. I'm one of the team members. I've been shooting on the team now for three years, and I hope to be the new student assistant next year.
Cindy Baker, Director of Varsity Programs.
Robert Davis, Coach, National Championship Shriner University.
There are some people around here who want to borrow some of these team members during dub season. All right. There you go. Let's do a picture here.
Thank you.
Good, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cindy, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Coach, great job. All right. Chief of Fuel Company, stand next to me. Chief David Knight. Tomorrow and Friday, and this has been mentioned before, tomorrow in front of the police station over on Sidney Baker, there will be a memorial service remembering law enforcement who have been killed in service. And here's a proclamation. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which is designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which that date falls as National Police Week. And to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the light of duty for protecting communities and safeguarding democracy. And whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Kerrville Police Department, Ingram Police Department, Kerr County Sheriff's Department, Texas Department of Public Safety, and other surrounding agencies. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the light of beauty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C., and 371 names of fallen heroes are being added in 2019. And whereas, May 15, 2019, is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown to have staff. Now, therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Kerrville, Texas, formally designate May 12 through 18, 2019, as National Police Memorial Week. Thank you.
If you'd like to come out, if you have the opportunity tomorrow morning, and pay homage and honor to the fallen officers that have fallen this year for Texas and national with their police departments and agency police departments from surrounding areas will be there as well. Hopefully, we can see you there. Thank you very much for remembering our fallen. Good, good.
I can elaborate on this, but an officer going up for a traffic stop never knows what they will confront. I heard at the rest stop several years ago on Interstate 10, officer pulled somebody over. That individual was a drug dealer who sicked his pit bull on the officer, got the officer on the ground. He would have been killed if another officer had not been there to protect him. So, let's pray for our officers. Little Health Month, I would like for representatives of NAMI State Hospital and the Volunteer Services Council, you will come out, please. and the Volunteer Services Council, you will come up, please. The, uh... Let me read this proclamation. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas, all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden... Let me get my glasses on. Who is it? Vocal, or something about old people? Yeah. Uh, prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And there is a strong research, there is strong research that animal companionship, humor, spirituality, religion, recreation, social connections, and work-life balance can help all Americans protect their health and well-being. And whereas, mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas, with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health and other chronic health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And each business, whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems, it has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Whereas, together we must first, we must recognize Volunteer Services Council for Kerrville State Hospital and the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Kerrville affiliate, for their work to diligently shatter the stigma of mental illness and promote the awareness of mental health. Now, therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, hereby proclaim Mental Health Month. In the City of Kerrville, and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Kerrville, to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the needs for appropriate accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Would you please just give us name and organization that you are associated with? Bill?
Bill Matthews, NAMI Kerrville, and also Kerrville State Hospital.
All right.
A board member of NAMI Kerrville.
Will?
Yeah, one more. I'm a board member with NAMI Kerrville.
Leanne Fitzpatrick, I'm the superintendent at Kerrville State Hospital.
Courtney Compton, Board President of the Volunteer Services Council for the Kerrville State Hospital.
Pete Calderon, and I'm Community Relations for Kerrville State Hospital.
All right. Yeah, I want, come on up and, and I'm going to present this to Willie, okay? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. The, uh, I don't know who's going to end up with this, but you, you can be the keeper of the joint, okay? Would you say a word to us about how the staff of the State Hospital is going to grow this year?
Yes. We will be expanding our services. And within the next three years, we anticipate increasing our staff by two hundred and eighty-five individuals. So we're very, very excited about that. And I'm going to be meeting with mayor, and we're going to talk about it in length. And as, as soon as we have more information, we'll share with the community. But we will be expanding our, our staff. So we're very pleased about that.
The, and let me share one of the things. The person behind, is Denise the president now of NAMI? Denise Lemiller is the president of NAMI National Alliance for Mental Illness. And she really was the one that got this proclamation to us and going, and she would have been here tonight. But two days ago, her husband died. Our prayers for her.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, okay. Laura, come up here. This is a proclamation about Williams Syndrome. Williams Syndrome Awareness Month. Last year, she came before us and talked to us about this. So let me, let me read this. Whereas, Williams Syndrome is a rare genetic developmental disorder that is present at birth and affects many parts of the body. And whereas, Williams Syndrome occurs randomly in about one in ten thousand births worldwide, with an estimated twenty thousand to thirty thousand in the United States. And whereas, Williams Syndrome is characterized by medical and cognitive problems, including cardiovascular disease, developmental delays, learning disabilities, and occurs equally in both males and females, and in every culture. And whereas, the Williams Syndrome Association, founded in nineteen eighty-two, is a nonprofit organization that provides comprehensive resources for people and families living with Williams Syndrome, as well as doctors, researchers, and educators. And whereas, through its efforts to raise public awareness, fund critical new research, share valuable information, and support families, the Williams, uh, the Williams Syndrome Association has improved the quality of life and futures of those affected by Williams Syndrome. And whereas, the Williams Syndrome Association, as well as the families and friends of those with Williams Syndrome, should be committed for their hard work, compassion, and commitment to educating our communities about this rare disorder. Now, therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Williams Syndrome Awareness Month. Mark would like to say something briefly.
Mayor, it's wonderful to see you first. And council, thank you for this honor. This year has been a very rough year on those with Williams Syndrome. We've had many of our people die from heart failure and other, and other things. This time last year is getting ready to go to Baltimore. And it was amazing. We had a lot of fun.
This was the national conference?
This was the national conference. I met people from Africa. I met people from China, Japan, all over the world. One of the things that I really wanted to talk about, I guess, is mental health. And that's one thing that people with Williams Syndrome suffer from. A lot of us have panic attacks. A lot of us have post-traumatic stress syndrome. A lot of us have clinical depression, and also some other things. What I was going to ask is, and if it's okay, I would like to sit down with the council sometime and talk about Williams Syndrome, and actually get them to know what Williams Syndrome is, and how it works, and what happens and what does not happen. But also, I am asking that you would give me a chance to talk to you about maybe, um, some kind of program where we can talk and get some issues settled. I have some issues that I would like to, like to get settled. But, um, there's one more thing I wanted to say. Five weeks ago, I lost my sister. Uh, she died unexpectedly. And I would like to dedicate this night to her. Her name was Sarah.
Yeah, okay, all right. We'll, we'll do that. And I, I want to get, I want to get a picture. Okay. If you'll come back up here. Let me see, I've known Laura for years. She is a sweet person. She's positive. And Mark, her husband back here, raise your hand, Mark. Great support and help. All right, let's see. Okay, let's keep looking this way right here. All right. How many of you have noticed the beautiful mural that is going up on the wall of, by the American Bank over here at the drive-in? And, yeah. Marty Garcia and the art class at TIBY did that. You want to say anything about it?
Uh, sure. I wouldn't expect it to talk, but sure. I can't take credit for it. I've been doing a lot of art for many years. And one thing that I've always realized is that public art is just where I love to live. And getting that wall was not just me. It was a lot of people, a lot of business people, the Pop-Hare Art People, the Bank of America, every... And the students and the parents and the principals. I mean, to, to create what we created in a pretty much a day or two was, took a lot of effort. And I think that's where I love to make art, is because it's just not me. I helped design the idea. I just facilitated the idea. But at the same time, I gave those kids an experience like Jeremy Walter has talked about, is that that was what I wanted to do. And that's what the mural was about. But it was designed to change y'all's perspective. It was to take a wall that's just normally gray and to have you think of what is going on? Why is that there? There was no object. There's no cowboy. There's no Indian. There's nothing anybody could get offended by. It was just color and lines. And that's what that thing was about for Kerrville, just, just to change our perspective.
This guy is a very popular teacher at TIBY. And does a great job. And you have a brother that's here tonight.
Yeah, my brother, Mario, right here.
Mario, right, yeah.
Also ran for city council, yeah.
Was in the race for city council, yeah. But this guy and his family are leaving for Indonesia.
Oh, yeah, Malaysia.
Malaysia, Malaysia.
Yeah. Yeah. So what my mom always taught me was that she didn't care where I went, just as long as I learned whatever I did and brought it back. And so that's exactly what we're doing again. We're going to go learn something, meet new people, get an experience, and then whatever I learn, I bring it back. And that's the whole plan.
All right, good, good.
Can I say one more thing?
No.
Yeah. Well, Jimmy, Jeremy, but he's going with the big seed and the little seed, that is really fantastic, because it could have done wonders for me if I would have had that opportunity here growing up in Kerrville. And it's just so funny that all this art is happening today, because a gentleman walked into my room today, Mr. Mike Lindley, who's been a community person, that's been big, big in Kerrville for a long time, walked to my door today at class, just showed up. And no one knows, but Mike Lindley was the guy who gave me my first art show, my first private art show here at Bank of America, where I did that mural. He used to own that building. So he gave me that building for a whole night, and that was my first art show. But it was after college. It was after I finished my education that I got that opportunity. What Jeremy and they are doing is doing it way early. And so just imagine what, what's happening with art and the opportunity that these kids will get. So I hope that y'all keep supporting that idea.
One more thing that I'm going to read a little bit of this, give it to you. Uh, executive, I had a meal with the executive from James Edgar Crassman this week. He said, "Bill, how can Kerrville, Kerrville be known for creativity?" Interesting question.
Right, creativity can do a lot. I knew I chose the right, the right path when I was down there.
Good, good. Uh, this certificate of recognition is being presented to the twenty eighteen-nineteen TIBY Art Class for their art mural located on the side, side wall of Pop-Hare Art on Clay Street. Project was made possible through a grassroots community effort involving students, Clay Street businesses, and many others. The City of Kerrville congratulates the TIBY Art Class for bringing art to downtown Kerrville, and for the support of the Kerrville Urban Trail System, CUTS, C-U-T-S, project.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, we have one more. And this is the Youth Advisory Committee that has served this year. I would like for those who are present, if you'll come up, please, stand next to me. Now, we have these resolutions of commendation for all of the, all of the teams. So, but I, I am not going to read all the names and so forth. But before we, before I do this, give us your, your name and where you are in high school.
Um, I'm Leila Kev, and I'm a junior at TIBY.
I'm Maria Hall, and I'm a senior at TIBY.
I'm Cassandra, and I'm a senior at TIBY.
I'm Kayla Cannon, and I'm a senior at TIBY.
I'm Eliana Scrosha, and I'm a senior at Olive of the Hill.
I'm Kyla Bach, I'm also a senior at Olive.
My name's Grace Guerrero, and I'm a junior at TIBY.
I'm Roman Garcia, and I'm a high school senior.
All right, let me, let me, let me go, uh, let me go one more time. Seniors, what are you going to do next year? I hope I don't embarrass anybody.
Oh, um, A&amp;M Aerospace Engineering.
A&amp;M Aerospace Engineering?
Oh, I'm going to UT Austin.
Okay.
I'm also going to UT Austin. I'm at Angelo State. Do all of them, uh, enough in college or not?
Boston? All right. Junior, junior, that's right, that's right. Okay. Whereas... Man, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, tell us, tell us what you do.
I'm still looking, but I want to study law.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, the, this is resolution of commendation. Whereas, Kendall Brown and all the rest has served as a member of Kerrville Youth Advisory Council with the date service beginning September eleventh, twenty eighteen. And whereas, Kendall Brown and the rest have served faithfully and dutifully on said board, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, that each of you be recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Kerrville Youth Advisory Council, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and the community. Okay. Now, Catherine? Is Kendall here?
No.
Okay. Kayla? Blake is not here. Cassandra? Okay, Daphne? Roman Garcia? Grace? Maria?
Yes.
Emily? Did you do the run for organ donation?
Yes, sir, that was...
All right. Molly?
Not here.
Okay. Gazelle?
Not here.
Okay. Elena?
Eliana.
Eliana, there you go, okay. All right, Jessica Trotter?
Not here.
Okay. Kirk Watson?
Not here.
All right, okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service this year. Oh, yes, 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 yes. Students have a presentation. So... Oh, wait, wait. We'll do it later, right? Yeah, go, go ahead, go ahead and do the presentation.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. All right, good evening, Mayor, other city council members. My name's Roman Garcia. First of all, congratulations to our new council members. Welcome. Thank you. Okay, my name's Roman Garcia. I'm the chair of the Kerrville Youth Advisory Committee. And today, we're going to be giving y'all our kind of end-of-the-year report. So we have some information for the new council members, just to give you a little bit of background in case you don't know where kayak and how we originated and who our members are. And then at the very end, we'll give you an overview of our youth survey that we talked about earlier. And then at the very end, we'll give you an overview of our youth survey that we talked about earlier. So we'll go ahead and start with Katie, I think.
Hi, I'm Katie. This year our officers, Roman Garcia was our chair, Grace Guerrero was our vice chair, Cassara Dang was our secretary, Kayla Buck was our public relations officer. And then we actually had a lot more committee members than we did last year, which was awesome, and they were Kendall Brown, me, Kayla Buck, Blake Coe, Cassara Dang, Daphne Dozier, Roman Garcia, Grace Guerrero, Maria Hall, Emily Holycamp, Molly Murphy, Gazelle Schreiner, Eliana Scoscia, Jessica Trann, Kirk Watson. We also had subcommittees. We had a general subcommittee which consisted of Eliana Scoscia, who was the chairman, Kayla Buck, who was the vice chairman, and then Emily Holycamp, Grace Guerrero, Blake Coe were the other members on that subcommittee. For our organ donation subcommittee, Emily Holycamp was the chairman, Grace Guerrero was the vice chairman, and Gazelle Schreiner, Molly Murphy, Kendall Brown and Maria Hall were the other members on that subcommittee. The purpose of the general subcommittee was to research and consider projects, events, guests, speakers and tours and to also report to the kayak with these recommendations. And the organ donation subcommittee purpose was to reorganize, or sorry, organize projects and events regarding organ donation and support and educate people on organ donation.
Hi, my name's Grace Guerrero, I'm gonna talk about what is exactly kayak. We were actually founded in 2015 by former Mayor Pratt and City Council who agreed youth should play a role in our city's future. Our purpose was to provide input to the City Council on community affairs and issues from a more youthful perspective. Encourage public service and empower the youth to become active members and participate in the future of the community. Kayak stands for Kerrville Youth Advisory Committee if you did not know that. And our mission is to serve Kerrville through community service and other initiatives that benefit the youth. And we also want to provide positive community impact through participation in city-sponsored activities and other events.
Hi. I'll be speaking for Blake today because he's not here. So what does kayak do? We're made up of 15 regular members and three alternate members. To be in kayak, you have to be a high school student and a Kerr County resident. The application process, they submit it to the City of Kerrville and if appointed, the members are sworn in as city officials. Kayak members learn about the infrastructure of the city and how it works. They also work with the City Council to plan special projects and events. We meet the second and fourth of each month at 4:30 PM on Thursday in the City Hall upstairs conference room. And we, on the occasion, we have orders around different locations in the city and our subcommittee meetings are often held at other meetings chosen by the chairman of the subcommittee.
So hi, I'm Eliana Scoscia. A few of the events that we've participated in slash hosted are the Texas Youth Advisory Commission Summit. So we went there to learn about what other kayak-ish events are happening. And then the Tybee Teens Life Donor Dash was put on by our very only Emily. And so we did the Valentine's Day at the VA, we made Valentines and went and like celebrated with them. The National Donor Day Drive and the donation booth at the farmer's market for the donor day. And then we also participated in Family Fright Night. And then as well, we were participating in the Kerrville Holiday Light Parade, Reeds Across America Ceremony, Salvation Army Red Kettle fundraiser, bell ringer. We did our own survey again this year and then we made dog toys for Freeman Fritz and kind of like joined Tybee Teens for Life to host the donor dash.
In addition to projects and events, we also were able to go on one tour this year, but hear from lots of different speakers that are involved in different things. So we went to the Kerrville Water Treatment Plant and the speakers, we had Josh Smithson from Kerrville Young Life come and speak with us. We also had Dale Trees, not sure where he is, but a super awesome presentation from him. We had Dr. Kendall Young, also a member of the Recovery Community Coalition. We had Ms. Ashley Boyle, the City Director of Parks and Recreation, come and speak with us. And we also had Karen Guerrero, she came and talked to us about some of the different animal services that Kerr County provides.
Okay, so my name's Emily Holycamp and I am the founder of Tybee Teens for Life, which is an organ donation awareness group in Kerrville. So pretty much I started Tybee Teens for Life and I was kind of on my own, didn't really have anyone to like help me out with it. So I kind of brought this to one of my kayak meetings and everyone was very interested in it and everyone was like, oh, that's kind of cool, like maybe you want to like help with that. So with kayak, we were able to put on the donor dash, which was a run walk in Louise Hayes Park to spread awareness for organ donation. So the donor dash actually, what was it? I think we raised, we raised $200. We had over 45 people come to the race and we were able to sign up over 10 people to become organ donors from the race and the next day's like donor day drive. So the donor dash was overall very successful and kayak definitely played a very crucial role in the donor dash actually happening and coming together to like really do make an impact on the Kerrville community. Okay, and we also made dog toys for Freeman Fritz. So pretty much we had a few people, not a few people, all of us brought in some t-shirts and we were able to cut up t-shirts to make them into dog toys, to take them to Freeman Fritz, to have the dogs have toys more, I guess, I don't know. So pretty much we made these toys and it was really fun just because we all got to do something together and have fun and it's like one of our last meetings. But we also were able to make an impact on the community by allowing more animals in the shelters to have dog toys. Oh, okay, okay, so the other thing we did was we went to the Texas Youth Advisory Commission Summit, which I actually was a part of whenever we went to go and go to that. It was a super awesome thing to go to just because we were able to see how these other youth advisory commissions are running, what they're doing, and we were able to take advice from them on what they're doing to what we should do. So from that, I feel like we really did learn a lot and we did have the chance to trade pins with other people from other cities. Another event was Reeds Across America, which was where I'm pretty sure that people on the committee went to go place wreaths on...
Veterans usually, I think.
Veterans, yes. I wasn't sure, I was impressed with that one. But that was another really cool event that we got to do and show up to.
Can I ask you a question real quick? Where was the summit at? I mean, was it national, like you had national?
It was in Fort Worth. Yes, ma'am.
So pretty much Texas was there?
Yes, ma'am, it was just Texas, I believe.
That's a lot, though.
Yeah.
And so they have like different youth commissions or youth, like us host them at different cities? So you can sign up if you join the Texas Municipal League and then your city can host one something like that?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, and then this is where we get to the part about the youth survey that we did, so we're gonna give you an analysis of that. So just an introduction, what the goals of that were. We wanted to get some information from the youth and see what issues were facing them in Kerrville. And then two was to bring that to y'all and then hopefully assist in improving Kerrville to be more of a place for all age groups. The time period that we covered was from April 6th to the 30th, that's how long the survey went and we got 123 responses for that. And at the very bottom, you'll see all responses are anonymous, so we can ask for any of their information just so they could be free to give the information they wanted to. So you can see the age demographic and whether they lived in the city or not. So you can see most of them were between the ages of 12 and 15 years old and most of them did, 65.9% did live within the city limits. So that's just some information of how you can see who is responding to these surveys. Motor transportation, most of them drove by car. The reason we were gonna provide this information is former council members that were here asked that this information be provided in case, I understand with the Kerrville 2050 Plan coming along, you're looking at what kind of roads you want to have, whether it's had sidewalks, bike lanes as well, so we gave you some of that information so you can look and refer to that as well. So this is to tell you about what they do here in Kerrville or I guess any time in their free time. You can see the top one was to hang out with friends. Next was school, studying, go to the movies, then play a team sport and volunteer, work. And you can see when we get to the very bottom, you have outdoor activities and shopping and things like that, not exactly very famous, I guess, or anything that you would really do here in Kerrville, and we'll get to that. So then we asked, "What do you really appreciate about Kerrville in its current status?" The top one was the health and safety of Kerrville, which I believe we can all agree. Then the environment, we have the parks there, education, schools, we have the opportunity to homeschool like I am. Then jobs, then youth activities and shopping options were the two bottom ones. So those were the top six. If you have any questions throughout the way, you can just go ahead and stop me so we don't have to keep going back on those slides. Okay, so we asked them what the pros and cons about Kerrville, basically. What did you like about Kerrville? So these were the top four answers, the small town feel, the quietness, the scenery and the environment, the nature, like the river trail and the access to the Guadalupe River. As you can see, we took some quotes from them just to show you their personal response. This is where they had the opportunity to write their response. So I'll just read a couple of them for the public too, if you can't see it. "It's a very unified community. I love the river and different aspects of nature that we have encompassed with the river trail. It's a safe environment for teenagers to grow up in. It's a quiet town and peaceful." So now we get to the part where, "How can we make Kerrville better? So what do you not like about it currently?" Well, currently, the top four, whereas it lacks youth activities, there is a drug and alcohol addiction issue, limited shopping options and poor road quality and conditions. And some of the quotes that we took from that are, "The drug problem," and when they answered the question, "What do you dislike about Kerrville?", "The drug problem" and "How everyone overlooks it." "There's nothing to do, so kids are resorting to using drugs. Not enough activities for us youth like bowling, ice skating and skating rink. Excessive money spending on unnecessary aspects of the city. Improved road potholes should be addressed. We have to drive to Fredericksburg or Junction to much smaller towns in order to do things." So, okay, we said, "So give us some things that you want to see come to Kerrville then. Give us some specific things and not just tell us what you do or do not like about it." And so some activities that they wanted to see was the bowling alley, which we did have before, they want to see that come back. A skating rink, concerts, I know the city is now hosting some concerts at the river. When we talked about that at our kayak meeting, we were trying to see if maybe there's a way where you can refer to some youth who would probably be interested in going to that and see what music they would be interested in listening to or what artists they want to hear from. So fun runs, food trucks at the river could also go on with the concerts. Miscellaneous was a large venue center for events open to the public. So I know we do have the Cali Theater, but of course you have to rent that or reserve that to get it and we have a couple of places probably like that. And then specific stores and restaurants. Now, do keep in mind, it may be unrealistic for what Kerrville is, but this guide gives you an idea of where we're hoping our city will go to and where we want to see it. So like Longhorn Steakhouse and Olive Garden, Chipotle, Taco Cabana, Target and Dick's Sporting Goods.
Roman?
Yes, sir.
Move toward wrapping it up.
Yes, sir, I'm actually about to get to our mission statement right here. So with all that information, what is the main purpose of this? Well, we took it all and said, "The most thing, the thing that everybody wants is youth activities." So our mission statement comes out to, "The City of Kerrville currently lacks in recreational activities for the youth. This possibly leads to improper alcohol consumption, drug addiction and illicit activities. As representatives of the youth, the members of the Kerrville Youth Advisory Committee strongly advise the City Council to take action to implement more affordable and convenient youth recreational activities."
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I assume that, well, in fact, in terms of staff, if you staff have come to get us each copies of that, of that presentation. All right, thank you very much.
Are there any questions or comments on that?
I would... If it's right, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to say, "Thank you for taking the time to do all that you've done and I've seen you around town, I've seen you at the farmer's market and I saw your picture in the paper for the various things you've done regarding the animal shelter and..." So I, thank you very much for your already being a part of our community, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we come to the consent agenda and these are items that we'll vote on together unless a council member wants to pull something out.
I'll make a motion that we approve the items in the consent agenda as they are presented.
All right. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Call it a favor if you'd like it to be known by the raised hand. Okay. Now we move into a public hearing at 7:05 and you do not have to have a speaker form signed up for this, so... All right. Paxton? Oh.
Ordinance number 201909, an ordinance annexing a portion of an approximate 35.05 acre tract of land out of the South Wallace Survey number 113, abstract number 347, and into the corporate limits of the City of Kerrville, Texas.
Said tract being located within Kerr County, Texas and the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Kerrville, Texas, and generally located adjacent to Loop 534 Veterans Highway, further describing the property to be annexed, adopting a service plan for the property annexed and establishing the zoning both for the property annexed and the entire tract.
All right, Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the annexation and zoning for the KISD Middle School property along Loop 534 and the intersection where Arcadia, excuse me, Olympic Drive will intersect with the loop. Across the street from Tybee High School, which is part of the Strategic Catalyst Area Number 8 in the comprehensive Kerrville 2015 Plan. Planning and zoning commission recommended the PI or Public Institutional Zoning District for this property since it is full of school. Access would be, primary access would be from Olympic Drive, secondary access off of Loop 534. Planning commission staff recommend this case for your approval and please answer any questions.
All right, council have any questions on this item?
Again, tell us, you just said, "Where will most of the traffic be?"
Most of the traffic will be off of Olympic Drive.
Okay, so from Olympic Drive, they will circle into in front of the school?
Correct.
That's what we're thinking, okay.
And as, as we spoke about last time, there is any ingress and ingress from 534, I believe, there will be.
Yes, there will be.
I think it's on the north side of the property, but anyway.
And again, we don't actually have a traffic study.
Not at this time, still in progress.
Any ideas when you think it might be close?
We're pushing our engineering firm pretty hard. As you know, at the last council meeting, we did let that contract. We're trying to rush that up as quickly as possible and also have Tech dot weigh in on that, so we're hoping, you know, in June.
Oh, good, okay.
If possible.
And the overall timetable, if it's approved tonight and...
Annexation and zoning, first reading tonight, second reading at the next council meeting. Looking to start construction hopefully in September. And then I believe it's roughly 18 months of construction after that.
All right, do we have any speakers signed up?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm going to vote against this because I've raised the issue of traffic a number of times. We're not seeing a traffic survey, we're not seeing results and I can't, I can't vote for it until we see that, so...
Mayor, if I could comment on that. So this is the annexation piece of it. There's gonna be one more reading on the, the annexation and zoning ordinance. This has still got to come through P and Z for plating and that's typically when you start seeing that kind of data, not on the annexation. And then of course with their building permit, so still a lot of checks and balances beyond just the annexation. But I understand, you know, how you feel about that, but I just wanted to state that that's the process.
Okay.
So this is just bringing the land in under...
City limits.
City limits.
Right, and the zoning.
Yeah.
So is there any harm?
My understanding then tonight is the first reading of the annexation and if we come back, the traffic study gets presented to us in June and we don't like that, then we can still stop that process or we can tweak that process at that time. or we can tweak that process at that time, is that correct?
You can, yes.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, is there a motion in regard to this item?
I will move that we, let's see, where do I need to be? Thank you. We have it there. That we accept the, that we approve ordinance number two oh two zero one nine dash zero nine on the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise the hand. Okay, all opposed, so it's four one. Okay. We're out of the public hearing at seven eleven. We're looking at six A, ordinance's second reading, Ms. McLeod.
Ordinance number twenty nineteen zero eight, amending the city's zoning code by changing the zoning district for a portion of a ten point oh six acre tract out of the Thornton F. Hollis survey, number one forty-three, abstract number one eighty-one, within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as one hundred Concho Drive, by removing the area from an R one residential zoning district and placing it within the Guadalupe River zoning district, containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty or fine of two thousand dollars, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject.
All right. Mr. Paxton.
Second reading, and please answer any questions.
This again is the tract up Easy Street.
No.
No, 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 okay.
Hospital.
College Drive and Thompson Drive.
Yeah, got you, okay, all right.
Is there not a map?
Yes, yes, there is, there is a map. I, I don't know if it's
There is a map.
We have a map.
Here's the map right here, if you, if you, yeah, anyway, it's, I don't know.
And, and we're really premature to talk about egress and all of those things.
Correct.
Okay.
And at this time, the property owner does not have any
Any plans.
Any proposals.
Okay.
The only question I had was, when we're doing comprehensive zoning and code review, and, not that we should stop the process, but if we rezone something now and then come back with a different overlay and a different zone, what do we do at that point? Do we allow rights under both? Do we accept in grandfather what was approved at this time? So, how does that work?
The grandfathered or non-conforming process is based on the existing use. So, this property currently has a single-family home on it. That use would continue or would be allowed as long as the use continues. With the new zoning district or the new zoning code, we'll be applying those districts citywide consistently as possible to the current zoning districts. In this case, the Guadalupe River District is not going to be a district that's in the new code. The code review committee has recommended a Guadalupe River overlay along the entire river corridor despite the use or in addition to the land use underneath it. This property is proposed as mixed-use in the future zoning code, which would be comparable to the Guadalupe River zoning district as it is a mixed-use district.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the council? Anything, Mr. Paxton?
Going to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve ordinance number two zero one nine dash zero eight.
All right. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, let me know by the raised hand? Okay. All right. Let's look at six B. This is the Easy Street. Ms. McLeod?
Ordinance number twenty nineteen zero seven, amending the city's zoning code by changing the zoning district for an approximate four point zero nine acres, consisting of two tracts out of the Patrick Fleming survey, number six six six, abstract number one forty-five, within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as the property located at twenty eleven Easy Street, by removing the property from the Gateway zoning district and placing it within the twenty-three N zoning district, containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty or fine of two thousand dollars, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject.
All right, Mr. Paxton.
Second reading, same thing as six A, and please answer any questions.
I think we went over it quite a bit already.
Yeah, this is the one, Easy Street and next I-ten where we
Leslie.
Had proposed or okayed another project out there.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And this was accepted by anybody and everybody that you talked to out there? There's not, not very many, but, you know.
Yeah, okay. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty nineteen zero seven.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, get a second. All in favor, let me know by the raised hand? Okay, thank you, the passage, Mary Ashley. Okay, we've already had the presentation from the Youth Advisory Committee. We come now to board appointments. And the first of those, do you read this in or do we just move ahead?
We can move ahead, correct?
Just move ahead, okay. Appointment of mayor pro temp, do we have a nomination?
I would like to nominate council member Judy Eichner to take us through the end of our terms here as mayor pro temp. I think it's important to share that opportunity or responsibility. So, if we'd be willing to do so.
And you make that nomination as the existing mayor pro temp?
Correct.
Okay, all right. We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all right. Got a motion and a second? All in favor of that nomination for Judy Eichner to be mayor pro temp? Please let me know by the raised hand.
Vote for myself.
Can you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
No, no, I don't.
Yes, yes.
I don't.
Okay, all right.
It looks good, five of them.
Okay.
Okay, she has, I have to show something.
You can vote, there's, there's no conflict, yeah.
Yeah. She's trying to be
I know, I know.
Doesn't look bad.
We'll note that in the record that she's
Okay, note, note that in the record, please. Okay, appointment of a council member to the airport planning committee. Do we have a recommendation, nomination?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Councilman Cochran as the new member to the airport planning committee.
Okay. All right.
I'll second it.
Did you second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I've got a second here. Okay. All in favor, if you'd let me know by the raised hand?
And he can vote, too, right?
Yeah, he can vote, too.
Wasn't very high.
I will say, you are coming onto that committee at a, what I think is an exciting time for the airport.
Can I just ask what, what the role is of council on the, on the airport planning committee? Is it, it's an advisory or it's a decision-making?
Would you like to explain the
It's advisory. And there's two members from the Kerr County district, and two of us. And because we are, we share ownership of the airport, that's, that's a little
And I've been able to attend some of their plans. They have a five-year strategic planning going on that is just taking them to a whole new level. So, it's exciting what's going on at the airport.
It is.
Cool things.
All right. Are there any items that you want to see on future agendas?
I would like to see if we can make a place to talk with Laura, however we do that.
Okay.
I don't even know her last name, so you excuse me for not knowing. But either, either you or all of us, I would like to see how we might be able to listen to her and help her a little more with her Williams Syndrome challenges.
I would, here's what I would suggest. That you and I and Kim sometime meet, meet with Laura.
Okay.
All right? Kind of learn more about Williams Syndrome and things that people face and so forth.
Maybe we can report something later about some good things we can try to do, so, thank you.
And we had asked last time to have a workshop with the appraisal district, and we are working on dates for that right now, so that's in the works.
Okay. One, one more thing, and the, tonight, we recognize mental health, but I want to brag on a staff member. Chief David Knight, chief of police, met with the NAMI group, the National Alliance for Mental Illness, recently, I mean, like last week, for a couple of hours. And they just, they said it was excellent, very appreciated, and, did you find him?
I can't, I couldn't.
Okay. Folks, you have sat through a lot tonight with the introduction of new council members and all the, all the recognitions and everything else. But I hope you leave with a little bit more of a sense of some things happening in the, in the community.
There's a lot.
I don't know if we're going to find him, okay. There is, unless a council member desires it, there's, I believe, no need for a, an executive session tonight. Okay, all right. Okay. Well. Okay, okay, yeah.
Poor Knight.
He flew the coop. Okay, anyway, but Chief Knight met with these folks who, some are mentally ill, some, a lot of them are parents of mentally ill. And anyway, just a, there was a great time and a good time and helpful. I just want to pass that on. All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
For movement.
Okay.
I'll second.
You ready? Okay, did you second it?
I can.
All right, okay. All in favor? Okay. We're adjourned at seven twenty-three.
May I say that was one of the best